Welcome to B News Weekly. I'm Phil Gallagher along with B News reporters Tad Stefanak, Chris Flaherty and Robert Paris. Juliana McGrae with sports and Gretchen Carey with the community calendar. Thank you for joining us. January Town Meeting wrapped up Wednesday evening after covering many hot-button articles. The first big article of the night involved a 90-minute presentation and discussion to establish a mixed-use innovation district dubbed Mixed District. Four different zoning articles were presented by Economic Development Director Melissa Tentacollis to create the Mixed District and unify the patchwork of different zoning types along Burlington Mall Road and Middlesex Turnpike area into one zoning district. Let's look.
And this is really to set us up and look into the future to understand what's coming at us and how we can best prepare to stay robust, relevant, and competitive as we move into the future. It's about shifting from the 1960s when we were looking at a car-centric, single-use environment to now a live-work-play environment. The idea is that we are bringing in new investment on our terms. In a lot of ways, our zoning is going to be really targeting this area. We want to strengthen the existing commercial and we want to use it by infilling, using strategic infill in this area. The idea is that we want to be maybe vehicle light. We want to get outside the place we live or work just to do a couple errands or activities, not all based on getting in our car. We start by looking at strategic infill. This proposal is not about tearing down or converting our existing commercial. The infill tries to open up opportunity in the parking lots. We don't have to cut down trees. We actually have infrastructure, utilities, and roads in this area. We're asking to look at this again today and really try to envision the future for the next 65 years for our next generation.
Companies now are seeking out markets that are experiencing growth and attracting people to work for them and fill in those offices. And the way companies attract talent needed to fill offices is by either creating or going to a space where people want to be. So these spaces are dynamic and vibrant environments where people can engage in a variety of activities and experiences.
This is a little bit of different tact in the zoning. We're telling the developers upfront what our residents want to see back when a site gets redeveloped, whether it's, as Melissa mentioned, pathways to connect different areas, improved open spaces in natural areas, public spaces, again, better streetscapes. So all that's worked into the plan.
The rezoning is an effort to create housing and business in close proximity with ease of travel and walkability and making use of green space for a more lively village-like environment in the area. The planning board will retain its power to review and adapt proposals for developments in this area. Town meeting decisively passed all four warrant articles. The body elected not to rescind an eight-year ban on marijuana sales in Burlington. Prohibition of recreational cannabis was put into effect in town in 2017. The proposal to rescind the ban was put forth by Town Meeting Member Alex Ruffield on behalf of resident Will Seagard. Many residents and elected officials expressed their opinions on the issue, some strongly in favor and others strongly opposed.
If you're going to vote against selling marijuana in town, it's because you don't want it here. You don't want it in our town. We don't need it here. That's what I hear. But it's here and there's no stopping it. There are people using it all the time, every day, and they're getting it right across our borders. They're getting it in Woburn, they're getting it in Billerica, and we're not keeping it out. And I'm so very concerned with the outlook for the town, with the taxes and our vacancy rate, that's the highest it's ever been, the capital projects we want to do, and I really, really want to see a new high school. So we might as well reap the tax benefit of something that's already here.
I have a very unique perspective on this. Thirty-seven years in law enforcement. In 37 years, I've yet to see marijuana in a positive light. In fact, I've investigated vegans, burglaries, where the target was marijuana. We've had robberies where the intended reward, so to speak, was the marijuana. I investigated a shooting in the Burlington Mall parking lot, which was a marijuana drug rip.
This also has been something that we've recently debated here in town when it came to the cigar shop going into place, and the same arguments happened both at the planning board and at our subsequent other meetings, and they also have not come to fruition. We either want to be smart, pro-smart business, pro-smart legal businesses that will add to our community, or not. And when we're facing the taxes that we're facing and all of these concerns, saying no to another positive revenue stream in town does not seem like the smartest idea.
One of the things that the proponent, Mr. Seagard, spoke about was he said he wanted us to remember one thing, that we need regulation. We have regulation. We regulated it already. We decided not to have this in the town of Burlington. This body did that not too long ago. I think we should stick with that. And if somebody has to drive to Billerica, they also have to drive to Billerica to go to a strip club, and they might have to go to North Reading to go to some porn shop or whatever else. Those are things that we're trying to keep out of Burlington, I would think, I hope. And I don't want those in Burlington. I don't want this in Burlington.
After lengthy discussion, the question was put forward and the motion passed with a narrow 46-44 in favor, which prompted a request for a roll call. After recount, the vote flipped, 46-44 against the rescinding of the ban. The question will now be placed as a non-binding referendum on the ballot for Burlington's local election in April, where the community will have a chance to express their opinions on recreational cannabis sales in town. Many longtime public servants were honored during the town meeting this week. Town Moderator Bill Byer asked for a moment of silence in honor of longtime Town Meeting Member Mamal Evans and Hope Paulson. Byer also acknowledged Town Meeting Member Sherry Ellis, who has decided to step down after her 30 years of service, as well as Town Clerk Amy Warfield, who after 19 years has decided to retire, as well as longtime Planning Board Member Ernie Covino, who is also stepping down after serving on the board for 36 years. Here is Mr. Byer acknowledging Warfield and Covino.
This is Amy's last town meeting. And if you want to know how good she is, wait till May. But she's been my right hand for my eight years plus, and she does a great job, and This concludes what the planning board has to say tonight, and it also concludes probably our last appearance here of Mr. Ernie.
Article 10.
Mr. Ernie Covino, who is finishing up his last term as a member of the planning board. He's been on since, I don't know, Dirt was young. Since Dirt was young, isn't it, when you got on the board, Ernie?
Oh, yes.
Yes, all right. But thank you, Ernie, for all your time and effort.
Other highlights of the meeting included a presentation by the signage subcommittee to establish signage districts in town and create rules for town center signage. Both articles passed. A middle housing overlay district was presented by the planning board in response to the MBTA Communities Act. It provides an option to revitalize the town center, allows for more single-level living and ground-floor commercial to maintain the commercial tax base. After much discussion, a middle housing district was approved for 24 acres on Terry Ave, Grant Ave, and at the corner of Cambridge Street and Kinney Ave, which is now the mass class site. The planning board also presented an amendment to the accessory dwelling units by law that creates guidelines on ADUs with the goal of maintaining the character of the town's single-family neighborhoods, and that passed for the clear majority. Additional items passed included a five-year contract for technology cybersecurity infrastructure, an amendment moving the animal control officer to the jurisdiction of the police department, as it has been operating for years, and an amendment to the general bylaws regarding the land use committee to better define the purpose of that committee. Governor Maura Healey and Transportation Secretary Monica Tibbetts-Nutt were at the Burlington DPW garage this week to tour the facility, thank workers, and highlight the administration's Chapter 90 proposal and transportation bond bill to provide funding for improvements on local public ways. B News reporter Tad Stefanak was there and has this report.
We know how important it is. No matter where you live in Massachusetts, you've got to be able to get around.
Massachusetts Governor Maura Healey paid a visit to the Burlington Department of Public Works Garage with Transportation Secretary Monica Tibbetts-Nutt to deliver good news to DPW workers and the residents of Burlington.
So we wanted to come by today because we think what our administration has done is pretty special. The other day, I filed a budget, and in our budget, we went big on transportation. We filed a budget that proposes $8 billion in transportation funding over the next 10 years.
In the House One proposed budget, there isn't just a focus on Chapter 90, which is a significant increase over last year, but also we have a winter resiliency, which is looking at $25 million in addition to Chapter 90. So those are the types of funds that would come to Burlington to buy things like snowplows, to be able to continue to invest in maintenance of their other vehicles so that they can continue to clear the roadways, continue to make infrastructure improvements.
That's the legislation that helps us get money to cities and towns for their own infrastructure work. And we're joined today by our town administrator here in Burlington, Paul Sagarino, who can tell you how important this funding is.
We're thrilled to host the governor and the Transportation Secretary here in Burlington today. They made some big announcements about their plans for transportation improvements in the state over the next few years. One of the big things that I feel is going to most positively impact Burlington is a very large increase in their Chapter 90 allotment. Those are the funds that we use to pave the roads here. Very welcome announcement, and we're really happy to host them here in Burlington for them to make that.
They proposed a 50% increase in state budget, so we should expect to see roughly around the same. It'll go along with our road bond that we'll ask for, so we'll be able to, you know, possibly more sidewalk projects, all sorts of road maintenance and improvements.
These are the kinds of investments and support we want to give to our cities and towns. So thanks, everyone.
From the Burlington DPW garage, I'm B News reporter Tad Stefanak.
In our first update on Burlington's local election this year, B News reporter Chris Flaherty has the rundown on all the candidates who have already pulled papers to seek reelection, as well as those that have decided to step down, and a few new faces that have thrown their names into the race.
Hey, everyone. B News reporter Chris Flaherty here, and welcome back to the B News Election Center. Election season is taking shape in Burlington. Many candidates have pulled papers seeking reelection, but a few new faces are throwing their names in the race. After 19 years of service, Town Clerk Amy Warfield has announced her retirement. The select board has voted to place the office of Town Clerk on this year's ballot. The duration of the term will be for one year remaining of Warfield's final term. Currently, Jennifer Priest is the sole candidate to pull papers. Priest currently serves on the Fox Hill School Building Committee as a parent representative and worked as the office manager for Burlington Youth and Family Services. Currently, the only race looking to be contested is for two five-year seats on the planning board. Bill Gaffney, current chair of the planning board, and longtime board member Ernie Covino have both decided not to seek reelection. Covino served 36 years on the planning board and eight years on the zoning board of appeals prior. Three residents have pulled papers this election. Gregory Ryan, who currently represents Precinct 1 in Town Meeting, Jeremy Harrington, who currently sits on the zoning board of appeals, and Jack Kelly, a Precinct 7 Town Meeting member who previously served on the planning board for 17 years and stepped down in 2019. Over on the select board, there are two three-year seats open. Nick Priest is seeking reelection. This would be his third term, beginning his first in 2019, and then securing reelection in 2022. Micah Speho, who is currently vice chair of the select board, joined the board in 2022 and is also seeking reelection. In the race for school committee, there are two three-year seats open, and both candidates are seeking reelection. Melissa Massardo, who first joined the committee in 2022, is seeking a second term and has already returned papers. Committee Chair Christine Monaco, who has served over 30 years on the school committee, is also seeking reelection. Another race that is currently uncontested is the Board of Health, where there are two three-year seats open. Dr. Edward Weiner, who is the current chair, has served on the Board of Health for over 30 years and is seeking reelection. Gail Demore is also seeking reelection, having first won a seat on the board in 2022. Residents seeking to run for office have from now until February 12th to obtain nomination papers, which can be picked up at the Town Clerk's office. Those seeking a townwide office must collect a minimum of 50 signatures from registered voters. Friday, February 14th will be the last date of file nomination papers with the board of registrars. And don't forget, Burlington's annual town election will be Saturday, April 5th, with polls open at Burlington High School from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We'll have plenty of more election updates in the weeks to come. Until next time, this is Chris Flaherty from the B News Election Center.
Police Chief Thomas Brown and Fire Chief Andrew Condey report that the Burlington Police and Fire Departments responded to a motor vehicle crash on Tuesday morning. On the morning of Tuesday, January 28th, the departments received multiple reports of a motor vehicle crash, where two vehicles, a Jeep Wrangler and a Honda CR-V, had both flipped in the area of Burlington Mall Road and Lexington Street. Both vehicles sustained significant damage. The driver of the Jeep was able to self-extract before the arrival of first responders. The driver of the Honda CR-V was trapped in the vehicle and was removed by Burlington Fire and transported to an area hospital with what are believed to be minor injuries. The crash remains under investigation by Burlington Police. Burlington Police has welcomed Officer James Dawson as the department's newest member. Officer Dawson was officially sworn in during a ceremony held on Monday, January 27. Before joining the Burlington Police Department, Officer Dawson served as an infantry platoon leader in the New Jersey National Guard before becoming a New Jersey State Trooper, a role he held for more than three years. Officer Dawson is originally from Barrow Township, New Jersey, and graduated from South Ave Regina University with a Bachelor of Science in Psychology in 2017. In the latest edition of senior news, B News reporter Chris Flaherty sat down with Council on Aging Director Marge Jetman to discuss all noteworthy programs and events to keep seniors busy over the next few weeks. Also had some words of wisdom for residents who might be feeling isolated during these cold winter months.
Marge, what do you hope people, or what do you hope seniors take away during this time of year when, you know, it's dark, it's cold, you might have to stay inside by yourself?
Keep yourself busy. Have hobbies. If you don't have one, find one.
Come down to the senior center, right?
Come down to the senior center, call a friend, you know, be social. That's the biggest. You've got to be social. Get out of the house as much as you can during daylight hours and when the weather's not bad, and you'll be fine.
You can find this month's edition of senior news in its entirety on our website. It was a busy week for Red Devils sports, and many athletes were acknowledged for their excellence in their prospective programs. B News sports reporter Juliana McGrae has all the latest in Red Devil action, and right after, Community Calendar with Gretchen Carey.
Hey, everyone. I'm Gretchen Carey, and this is your community calendar. On Sundays in February, the Burlington Public Library will be showing romantic comedies from 1:30 to 3:30 p.m. No registration is required for this event. On February 7th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., the Burlington Parks and Recreation Department will be having the special Someone Soiree at the Hilton Hotel in Woburn on Two Forbes Road. Pre-registration is required for the event. For more information and to register, go to the recreation website. On February 8th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., Third Avenue will be having live ice sculpting on the green. There will also be music on the green as well. Everyone is welcome, and the event is free. For more community calendar events, go to bcatv.org, burlingtonpubliclibrary.org, and burlingtonrecreation.org. I'm Gretchen Carey, and that was your community calendar.
Hi, I'm Amy Poehler, and you're watching B Cat. Go Red Devils!
Hey, everyone. I'm Juliana McGrae, and this is your weekly sports report. Both basketball teams had games against Winchester High School on January 24th. The girls had a huge 51-30 win on the road. The boys were at home, and we were there to catch the action.
Winchester, Burlington, Devs B-ball. Let's do it! In the first period, the Devils were down by 2 with an 11-9 score. It was a big momentum shift in the second, when the Devils scored 16 points, taking the lead 25-22 at half. The game was very close at the end of the third period with a 36-32 score at Burlington. With 3 and 1/2 minutes to go, Burlington and Winchester were all tied up at 42. The Devils added three points to the board, but in the end, Winchester took home the victory, 55-45.
The girls had another game on the 26th against Manchester Essex, where they had a dramatic win in the last 10 seconds.
A win is a win, as they say, and it was a very close win for the Lady Devils. And they didn't start out with the lead, per se. At the end of the first period, the Devils were down by 2 with a score of 12-10. The game became neck and neck at the end of the second with a score of 29-28 Manchester Essex. Burlington took control of the third with a 41-35 score. With 15 seconds to go in the fourth, the Devils were down 46-44. Savannah Scally changed that in an instant with a three-point shot right before the buzzer.
Both of the teams won on the road against the Stonemans Spartans on the 28th. The girls, 40-28, and the boys, 65-50. The girls are 9-5, and the boys are 9-4. The Burlington Ice Palace was busy the past couple days as Burlington hosted two double headers at home. The Devils first competed against Belmont, and the girls lost 2-1 with the lone goal scored by Sophia Clary. There was a back-and-forth game with the boys as they ended up going into overtime with Belmont. Robert Paris takes us there.
The Belmont Marauders and the Devils were neck and neck at the Ice Palace. The Marauders quickly scored 1-0. Burlington struck back quickly in the next period with a 2-1 lead, scores by Nolan Jennings and James Gordon. Third period was very interesting, with Belmont taking the lead back after scoring two goals, 3-2. It was 3-3 after James Gordon scored again for the Devils. The game was still knotted up at the end of regulation, which meant overtime. Although the overtime period was five minutes, it felt like an eternity for both teams. At the very end of it, Belmont scored on a breakaway, 4-3, sending Devils fans home in heartbreak.
In the Woburn matchup, both Devil teams lost to their win streak rival. Nolan Jennings scored in the 4-1 loss for the boys, and Chloe Rabazi scored in the 3-1 loss. Both teams lost on the road, and Winchester on the 29th. Chloe Rabazi scored the goal in the girls' 3-1, while the boys were shut out 2-0. The girls are 6-6, and the boys are 6-6 and 1. Lady Devils field hockey star goalie Lauren Scalia makes record book. Lady Devils field hockey star and goalie Lauren Scalia makes records. Robert Paris has a story.
Sophomore and goalie Lauren Scalia made history this past November, saving 58 shots on net in a single game, making her the highest in the state and second highest in the country. It took a few months for the record to become official, but it was definitely worth the wait.
So I was super excited when I had broken it because I actually didn't know that I had. The game was like super intense, and I had a lot of shots on me, and when I came out, I was just like, I was so tired. And then on the bus ride home, I got a text from my mom, and she said that, you know, there was all this stuff about the fact that I had made 58 saves, so I was really close to breaking a record. And I was like, there's no way. Like, that just felt like any other game, so I was super excited when I found out. And then when it recently got published and we finally heard about it, I was super excited.
Scalia and her head coach, Ann Marie McNeil, did some research to be sure a record like this hasn't been broken or made.
We checked our books, and I saw the 58 saves, and I was like, this has to be something. And Lauren looked up the state first, and the state record was way less than that, so she has the number one record in the state. But then nationally, I went on the national website, and I saw where it was at, and I was like, that'll fall number two nationally. So that was pretty exciting, and then we found like the application process and all that, and then it was just a waiting game for a few months while they had to sort through everything and validate the performance and everything, but super excited for her. She deserves it.
Outside of the fall season at BHS, Lauren continues to play through club field hockey programs.
So I originally did the Burlington youth field hockey program when I was in fifth grade, and that was the first time I'd ever picked up a field hockey stick. And I ended up playing with the Wizards, the Wizards Field Hockey Program, up until about a month ago, where I did end up switching over to Northeast Elite Field Hockey. But those programs really have developed my game so much, and I'm so thankful for all the progress that I've made with them.
Lauren has already been in contact with a few college coaches, which has piqued her interest.
I've toured like maybe six or seven schools, and I really liked the process. I've met a lot of fantastic people, and I have a few schools in mind that I'm hoping to get offers from in the future.
Now, as a national record holder, she's continuing to improve her skills one game at a time. McNeil has said she's very passionate about the sport and wants to help her team any way she can during gameplay.
Because she deserves all the recognition in the world for the hard work that she does, so it's awesome. Her love of the game, as long as she keeps that love of the game that she has, there's really no bounds to what she'll do because she's always willing to work for it, and I think it's her just love of the sport of field hockey that keeps her drive going and her hunger to succeed, and she loves like the one-on-one battles and that competitive nature. Like, she wants to save everything, which is just awesome. That mentality, you need it.
Congratulations, Lauren. I'm Robert Paris for B News Sports.
Devils Wrestling had a try meet last week against Middleborough, Oliver Ames, and Silverlake, finishing 0-3. Max Schartzman won his matches against Middleborough and Silverlake. Kai Gong won his matches against Middleborough and Cameron Bonnell, won all three of his matches. You can check out the full results at bcatv.org/sports. Burlington defeated Keith Nectical 44-33 on the 29th, securing their fourth win of the season. Schartzman, Lucas Abreu, Cameron Bonnell, Noah Faro, Connor McElroy, Davi Tonani, and Christian Inn, and Josh Levitt all won in their weight class. Wrestling is now 4-17 this season. Girls and boys indoor track are competing in two meets coming up. First will be the Middlesex League Championship on February 3rd, and then the Massachusetts State Track Coaches Association Qualifier meet on the 8th. Boys swimming will be competing at the Middlesex League Championship on the 30th. We will have full reports in next week. Girls gymnastics are 6-0 after a 132-124 win against Wilmington on the 23rd. It was also a special night for the three seniors who were recognized, Mia Conlin, Olivia DeBrava, and Emily Kim. Burlington will be on the road in Stonemont on the 30th. Updates on next week's report. For more Red Devil action, check out our sports section at bcatv.org/sports, and follow us on X at B News Sports. That's all for this week. I'm Juliana McGrae. Back to you guys in the studio.
Burlington High School's robotics team, the DevilBots 2876, is in their build phase for this season. B News reporter Tad Stefanak checked in on the team's progress.
The Burlington High School first robotics team, 2876, also known as the DevilBots, have begun preparations for their upcoming competition.
This year, they have a like sea theme to it, so they've got pieces of PVC pipe, which they're calling coral, and they've got these big like kickballs that they're calling algae. And there's areas where they can pick it up and other areas where they can score them. So putting the PVC pipe onto pegs of varying heights, and then the algae, there's a little goal on the ground, and then there's going to be another big trough high up where they can try to shoot it in. So there's a lot of different ways to pick these things up and score them.
At the start of every season, we take a look at the game, and then we start designing how we want our robot to look on a computer. This way, we don't have to expend materials and time, and we can test it out in simulations and show how it interacts with the rest of the field and other robots to make sure that our design actually works out and that we can implement our idea properly.
We're working on like getting all the mechanics actually moving with motors and getting the robot to drive around, and also we're in charge of creating the controls for the driver.
Well, this is where like everything gets built, and like we do fabrication, we cut things, and we put these together. This is like where all the building happens.
So far, so good. We're only like a week and a half in, so people have gotten a lot of good ideas. They've been researching a lot, and we're starting to prototype things, so things are moving in a good direction.
From the Burlington High School Lower Library, I'm B News reporter Tad Stefanak.
It's time for another photo of the week. Over the holidays, the Burlington-based Middlesex County Deputy Sheriff's Association held a clothing drive for the benefit of people helping people. This photo, sent in by photographer Joe Brown, shows members of the association dropping off. off several large boxes of clothing to People Helping People. Thank you for the photo, Joe. We'd like to see your photos. The photo could be of something you see around town, whether outside your own door, or even photos of your family members and pets, whatever you think is interesting and would like to share. Send them to beecat@beecat.tv with the subject line "Photo of the Week." And now the votes are in, and this is your 2020 Photo of the Year. Here it is, almost. This one was also sent in by Joe Brown last May, capturing this incredible image of the Aurora Borealis as seen over Wildwood Park in Burlington at about 7:00 p.m., 7:45 p.m. on Friday, May 9th. Congratulations, Joe, and thanks for all the great photos. That's it for this week's news. Stay tuned after the broadcast for a new segment of Happy Reading with Alida Chabernon. I'm Phil Gallagher, and we'll see you next week.